We'll continue to do this electronically. So we will begin the meeting with a roll call, Sonia.
Okay, Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner DeJoy. Commissioner Grill. I see you, but I can't hear you. I got you. Commissioner Hood.
Present.
Commissioner Holt.
Here.
Commissioner Cantner.
Here.
Commissioner McMurphy.
Hold on, here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Perryman.
Here.
Commissioner Restly.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Commissioner Reisberg.
Here.
Commissioner Said.
Here.
Taguio.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas. Underwood. Commissioner Yang.
Yes, here.
Chair Rango Morales. And that's it.
Thank you for that, Sonia. So we have a pretty quick agenda. I don't have any new announcements. I'll move on to Luis. Luis, do you have any announcements for the commission?
I do. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners, members of the public and staff. I wanted to take the opportunity, happy to share and introduce a new staff person on the city planning team. And I'll ask her to join on camera if she is able to. Her name is Marilyn Rosendahl. She joins as a senior city planner. I'll just note a couple of things that she'll be working on with us. She'll be leading the coordination of city applications to state and regional development grant programs. So we have kind of a internal function in PED where we coordinate with the various other teams, so the housing team, economic development team, and the HUD grants group on submitting, working with developers and submitting applications for development and pre-development dollars to support development projects. And so that's a really important function to coordinate and to ensure, you know, we have what we need to understand kind of priorities as we support applications to those different pots of money. And so Marilyn will be working on that. In addition, she'll be working as the planning liaison to Highland District Council, so taking that over from Katie Dadless, and then working on a variety of zoning studies. And Marilyn has been a planner in private practice locally here, supporting clients like the Shaka P. Metadoggedin Sioux community. And she's worked as a planner for cities in Texas and for state entity in Florida. So I just wanted to, you know, have a warm welcome for Marilyn and connect her to the commission. And yeah, so if you want to say anything, I don't know, Marilyn, or just say hello. Appreciate it.
Yes. Hello. It's a pleasure and an honor to be of service. Please don't, in the future, ever hesitate to contact me if you have any questions on anything that I'm working on. I'd like to get to know each and every one of you, and I thank you so much for all that you do. Have a wonderful day.
Great. Thank you.
Great, and welcome to the team. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's the zoning committee. Commissioner Baker.
Commissioner Baker is unable to join us today, so you've got me, Commissioner Riley. Good morning, everybody. The site plan review committee meeting for Tuesday, June 29th, will have Victoria Park site plan for new athletic fields. That's a City of St. Paul Parks and Recreation Department application, and then a Wabashaw Event Center, which would be site improvements to 160 Wabashaw Street South. There was no business on the proposed June 17th zoning committee meeting. And we have one item before us for the July 1st zoning committee meeting, which is 695 Grand rezoning, which is to rezone from B2 community business and East Grand Avenue overlay district to 230 traditional neighborhood without the East Grand overlay district, and that's at 695 Grand Avenue, the northwest corner at St. Albans and Grand, if anybody would like to take a look. And I think that completes the zoning committee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Riley. The next item on the agenda is the Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee, Commissioner Grill.
Commissioner Grill, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right. I think there also might be someone that's hot on mute. We might be getting a little bit of feedback. So today, we have one item before you. Before we get into that, I'll just do the housekeeping stuff. Our June 23rd meeting was canceled. So nothing coming up for the next planning commission meeting at this moment. And then our next meeting, July 7th, the meeting topic is still TBD. So we have one item on the agenda today, which hopefully everyone is very well aware of. It is the parking study. And so just for a quick bit of background on the parking study, since you've been hearing about this for quite a while. The parking study was first initiated in 2018. And it started coming to us, this sort of this class of the planning commission, in January of 2021. The Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee held six review and work session meetings between February, between January and March of this year. In March, we released the parking study for public comment, and so you remember that. That was March 19th. And we set the public hearing for April 30th. April 30th, we had the public hearing, and then we left it open for comments. At our previous meeting, the Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee reviewed the public comments, and then we came up with a recommendation for the planning commission. So at that meeting, we voted four to one to forward on the eliminate option for parking minimums to the full planning commission. So the item in front of everyone today is the full elimination of parking minimums. And you have seen presentations previously from Tony Johnson and the staff on this item, and Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning has had this for quite a while. You received, I believe, on Wednesday of this week, the full 187 pages of notes and comments and revisions. And I do want to take this moment to just thank Tony Johnson in particular. He spent a ton of time working with us on the committee to help make sure that this goes through smoothly and that we understand what's happening. And I believe that Tony is here today. I see him here. And so if folks have specific questions and comments, staff is available to answer those. And I don't know, Tony, if you have a presentation planned for today.
We have a very short one.
Thank you. I will hand it over to you then for the presentation. I will leave my comments on things for the discussion portion.
All right. Yeah, thanks, everyone, and good morning. So today, we're just going to quickly go over the public comments that were received and the CNP recommendation. So as Commissioner Grill stated, we released a study for public comment on March 19th, 2021. We had two webinars planned, and we did two webinars that were open to anyone citywide, and then we also gave presentations at a number of community groups, district councils, and business associations. The presentation that we gave, for the most part, was the storybook format presentation that you guys saw, which kind of laid out the high points of both options, and then also compared kind of benefits or downsides of both options. On April 30th, the planning commission held the public hearing, and the public comment period remained open until May 7th. We received 237 comments, and then we had four people who spoke at the public hearing who also submitted comments. Of the comments, we received roughly 70% of those comments preferred the option to eliminate minimum parking. We also had, in about three of the comments, some specific suggestions for further changes, such as lowering the threshold for when a travel demand management plan is required, lowering the threshold for when unbundling parking is required, lowering parking maximums, specifying the type of bike parking required with long-term versus short-term bike parking, particularly for residential and office uses, and increasing the bike parking requirement to one per unit. At this point, staff is not recommending any further amendments. However, these suggestions could be used to inform the scope of a future study, and this will also give us time to evaluate the changes that are proposed in the current amendments. And then we'll have Luis take this slide to talk a little bit about some of the coordination with other departments.
Thanks, Tony. Yeah, I wanted to kind of contextualize this a little bit. This study, you know, oftentimes we do zoning studies, and they, you know, impact land use sort of decisions, and so therefore the zoning committee and the planning commission, and then it moves forward on to city council for final text amendments to the code. This is also a zoning study. And, but, we have some other departmental stakeholders that, you know, that are impacted a bit more. And so recognizing that early on, you know, we always talk about public engagement. We've done a lot of internal departmental engagement on this, on this project, knowing that. And so the two departments we've been working really closely with throughout were the Department of Safety and Inspections and Department of Public Works. So just a little bit more about them. So with the Department of Safety and Inspections, they've been sort of on board for a while and helped us really think through each of these edits. In particular, well, I'll note, you know, Tony, in what you have before you today, there's been an additional amendment made around off-street loading provisions that would simplify it and make it easier to administer for DSI staff. So that's an interesting new piece. But we spent a lot of time on, you know, if we have, if we continue to have minimum parking requirements, even in the reduced version, you know, recognition that there still be sometimes a need for variances or requests made to, you know, to vary from the minimum. And that definitely has a staffing impact to DSI. Just understanding that maybe that would be reduced if we have fewer, you know, less parking actually required, perhaps that works for more people and then less variances result. You know, with the elimination option, you know, we started from this sort of idea that, oh, well, you know, variances won't be required anymore because, you know, there's no minimum, right? Well, as, you know, as an impact actually to that, you know, there's a bigger weight put on travel demand management. And so in both options, we have a much more robust travel demand management program and guide. And so, you know, more work sort of on that side of the ledger for DSI, but again, we have some outside outside of the city support on review of those plans. So that's been a real positive engagement with DSI. And then on Public Works, we've also engaged, and they're sort of, we've engaged with a variety of different divisions. Everybody from transportation planning, you know, the folks who are really working hard on bike planning, bike lanes and pedestrian planning and sort of complete streets, to the traffic engineering group, our traffic engineer, and sort of just thinking about what are the impacts of no off-street or reduced off-street parking on the street. And so we continue to have that conversation. It's been a positive interaction with them. They have emphasized, you know, that they aren't opposed to the changes being proposed, either reducing parking minimums or eliminating them. But at the same time, they understand, you know, we're in a changing environment for how we use our public right of way, right? Because our comprehensive plan 2040 talks about that quite a bit. You know, so we understand that with no off-street parking minimums, if that's the case, if that's what the city decides to do, that's going to put increased demand on on-street parking resources. So we understand and agree on that point. A couple of policies are referenced here on this slide from the comprehensive plan. So just to remind the Commissioners, you know, we have a modal hierarchy in transportation and street project design, so thinking about pedestrians first. First, bikes, transit users, and then other vehicles. So we're, not to say you can't drive a single occupancy vehicle anymore in St. Paul. It's to say that we're thinking differently about how we use our streets, how they get designed, how, you know, how we balance all of those uses and all those needs and modes. But we also are prioritizing safety when we're looking at projects with street design changes. And so we understand sometimes there is potential for a loss of on-street parking parking spaces when, you know, a bike lane is introduced, or, you know, we've got bump outs at important intersections or places where pedestrians need to be crossing frequently and safely. And that actually is ahead of, that priority on safety is ahead of maintaining parking. Sometimes we're going to have parking losses. And so our Public Works Department recognizes that. They just, we just got through the Capital City Bike Way recommendation where there are some business parking impacts. And so sort of eyes wide open. We know that that's an issue. We have to solve for that, and so we're working with Public Works to help get there. And then a word about, this was an area of particular interest recently. So the operations folks from Public Works talked to us about, you know, in particular, snow emergencies, but really, it's anytime they need to do street maintenance, like, you know, when they're cleaning the streets, you know, after the winter and things like that. They just wanted to, again, underscore that they don't oppose these changes, but they wanted to acknowledge consequences on residents and businesses for these greater demands on on-street parking. And in particular, that can be felt greater with, for low-income folks and renters and folks who live in areas with greater density and limited on-street parking. And so, you know, the biggest complaint they get, and this won't be a surprise probably to anybody here during the winter, is that, you know, the snow, certain streets aren't well plowed. You know, folks haven't been able to move their cars, you know, as consistently during the snow emergency. And a lot of the reasons that residents have cited, again, this probably won't be a surprise, but it's just interesting to hear. You know, they didn't have time to move it, or there wasn't a place to park nearby. It was too far away for them to park and to be able to walk back home. And things like that, or work schedules, you know, that don't line up with the hours of the snow emergency. And so, and they see others leaving their car in the street, and so that, you know, it's sort of understood that it's okay to do that. And so that's been a challenge, because, you know, obviously, people want clear streets, and that comes back to the city as a comment. But then, you know, it's the management of that and how people can actually do that. So in recognition of that, you know, we've talked initially with Public Works a bit about some additional work that could be done on the regulatory side. So, you know, right now, you know, we know that there are places where there's underutilized residential parking, just in the neighborhoods where, you know, you might have a two-car garage, and you only need to use one of the spaces, or something like that, an off-street space off of the alley that maybe you're not needing. And so there could be some more work done to make that easier. So if a neighbor who doesn't have off-street parking needs to move their car, especially seasonally during a snow emergency, for instance, they're able to work with their neighbor who does have that option to be able to utilize that resource. I mean, Tony has a great slide in his presentation, earlier presentation, about how much of the city we have in parking infrastructure, and it's a lot. And so it's not really a scarcity. It's just a matter of how do we figure out that sort of supply-demand and regulatory piece. And some of that might fall more on the licensing and the communication side, but there is additional work to be done. Public Works has told us, too, that they are really interested in modernizing their snow emergency and their snow operations function as a whole, using technology in a better way and all of that. So all of this to say, you know, great conversations with our peer departments throughout the process. Understand that as we change, as we change these requirements, there's work ahead, and a lot of that, we're going to continue on with the follow-up with Public Works to DSI about, we have the comprehensive plan in place now. What do we need to be prioritizing in the years ahead to be able to fully implement it? So that's my little take on this, and I'll turn it back over to Tony to kind of wrap it up. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Yeah, so on June 9th, the Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee met to review the public testimony and make a recommendation. As Commissioner Grill already stated, the committee voted to recommend that the planning commission forward the full elimination package of amendments and the supplemental TDMP guide to the mayor and the city council for consideration. So with that, I'd be happy to take questions. I don't know if Commissioner Grill, did you want to speak after, and then maybe I could answer questions if anyone has any?
I think I only have a couple of items. I think Tony has done a really good job with presenting this in a way that makes sense to folks. I think in particular, the slides for the public, for the community engagement were particularly effective. I think even within the committee, they helped simplify some of the concepts that were really complicated in the fuller document. But I think the most important things for us to keep in mind are really that the direct costs of creating, maintaining, and keeping this many parking stalls in the city are high. Some of that parking could be housing. When you think about parking spots, and you think about the size of two parking spots for an apartment, you're talking about half of the size of an apartment. So when we think about needing room and needing space for housing, I think this is just something to keep in mind. And then when you think about really opportunity costs and the people that could be using that, I think that's also just something more more thoughtful for us to consider. And I know this isn't a new topic for everybody, so I don't need to dwell on it too long, but I'm just, I'm very excited that this is before the planning commission today, and that hopefully this makes its way to the city council sometime this summer.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff or for Luis? I have several, but I'll defer to Commissioners first. I see Commissioner Riley. And Commissioner Taguio.
Thank you, Chair. I just, first of all, this is really excellent work, and I'm really excited to see all the strikeouts. It's been, it feels like it's been a really long time coming for this kind of change, so I'm excited for that. But I have two questions related to bike parking that I wasn't able to find in any of the materials. So I apologize if this is, I'm sort of late in the game. It's just a question. Curious why there's only three bike spaces per classroom, and why and the justification for the one per 5,000 square feet of gross floor area. It just seems potentially low. I think it's a great start, and maybe it's something that can be looked at moving forward. And my other question is, how will, besides the TDM planning, management planning, how will sort of use of shared vehicles and/or electric plug-in spaces be incentivized, if at all? And that's, those are my questions. Thanks.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I think the parking, the bike parking requirement is also one per residential unit, or one per 10. So I would just add to that question as well.
One per three. Yeah, so the way I determined bike parking requirements was just by scanning other cities' codes and figuring out what the range of bike parking was with different cities. There is, of course, areas where we may, maybe could have been more aggressive. I mean, there's some cities that do do one space per residential unit. But for now, I just, I tried to kind of set them at a middle ground compared to our peer cities, was my approach. But, you know, they certainly could be tweaked up or down, you know, maybe with a future study. And then in regards to EVs, kind of outside of this study and this effort, one of the things that the mayor's office has been working on, and it's something that I think has come to you guys a little bit, is building out our network of shared EV cars around the city. One thing that could be done potentially in a future study, and something that our cities are doing, is requiring parking to be EV-ready. So essentially, what you would do with an ordinance like that is require that at least the conduit to have EVs is laid down and in place. So in the future, if they wanted to add EV charging, the parking lot would already be set up to do that. So that's something that the commission could consider looking at in the future as well.
Thanks so much, Tony. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Taguio, and then Commissioner Cantner.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to preface my comments by saying that I am so impressed with the work Tony has done here, and the entire department. And I wholeheartedly agree with the aim here, which is to take us away from a very car-dependent, car-centric culture towards some of the kind of other cities around the world. You know, I've lived in London and Manhattan before for most of my life, and I would love nothing more than to live in a city that way. One of the important ways of getting there, in my mind, is sort of incentivizing that kind of hard and soft infrastructure change, which is why I'm so interested in sort of how the TDMP strategies work. My, so I understand how they work for the reduction option. I understand that you essentially say, this is, these are the parking minimums, and you can accumulate TDMP points and therefore reduce them against the standard. I'm curious about how that works under the elimination option. How many points are required, and how much TDMP is required under an elimination option, and how do we actually require it of new developments?
Yeah, sure. So with either option, a TDMP would be required for any development that has 25 or more residential units or any non-residential use with 20,000 square feet or more of gross floor area. One of the big differences, or one of the differences between the two options is that in the reduced minimums option, you can use TDM strategies to reduce your parking requirement. And because of that, there may be, you know, that kind of creates an incentive to do TDM, more TDM stuff. So we may see more TDMs come in with that option. And then in terms of how the points are set, that's the same for both options. So there's two things that influence the point targets on a project. One is geography, and then the other one is parking ratios. So for geography, the most TDM points would be required in downtown, and then the second most would be required along high-capacity transit lines, and then the third most would be required for everywhere else. And then within that, there's parking ratios that set your TDM points. So there's a reduced parking ratio and an excess parking ratio. And if you're in between those point targets, then you get the base points. And then if you reduce your parking, you get less, you get less TDM points. So that's one of the ways that we incentivize lower parking ratios without doing a hard maximum. So it gives people more flexibility, but it incentivizes lower parking ratios. And then conversely, because if you did more parking, it would add to your TDM points. That's a disincentive to build more parking.
Thank you. I understand that, if I may. How, under the elimination option, though, how do we, how do we figure out how many points are required of, say, a new multifamily building or an office? You know, you talked about kind of, you know, setting them against some kind of standard, but obviously, we're doing away with those standards. You know, like, under the elimination option, there are no parking standards anymore. So Like, under the elimination option, there are no parking standards anymore. So where where are those sort of numbers coming from in the elimination option?
Got it. Yep. So so there's a set, in the TDM guide, there's another. There's the ratios are in the TDM guide separate from. The the parking table. So even without. Having a minimum in the chart, there's there's different parking ratios that are in the TDM guide. So they they live separate from the code changes. I could pull it, show you if you want.
That's okay. If if they're in there, it's totally fine. So es- essentially, instead of having parking minimums in the code. There are th- those same kind of basic ideas, in other words, X number of spaces per gross floor area or whatever. Are now in the TDM guide and on the elimination option. New developments would be required to essentially meet meet those minimums, but instead of by making parking, they do that by implementing alternative TDM strategies.
Yep, yep, exactly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Cantor?
Yeah, thank you. So my question is also about the TDMP. And kind of on the opposite spectrum of where Commissioner Tagliaf was. It seems like we're creating a lot of process for something that I wonder if maybe the. Market is already going to be providing, you know, especially thinking about residential buildings, I would imagine residents want. A lot of the amenities that are provided in, like, are listed in the TDMP. And also just looking at the the points numbers, it looks like. Someone could easily get, or a development could easily get to that point number. Just by having unbundled parking and bike parking, which we're already requiring by code. So, yeah, I guess I'm just kind of wondering, like, what's the thought behind having. This whole process and additional staff time? If maybe it would be more helpful to just provide like a a resource to developments? So yeah, Tony, if you could talk about that, that'd be great.
Sure. Um, yeah, so one of the the things I think that's important to remember is the current process and how it works. Which is, which is extremely onerous and open ended. And right now, to produce a TDM plan that would be acceptable by the city because of the traffic modeling requirements that are included with it. It would be about $5,000 to $10,000 per plan. And so what this point system is intended to do is streamline it by standardizing. These strategies and then the points for the strategies were were. Set based off of our estimated vehicle mile travel reductions. And so I worked with a consultant on on this piece to set those point totals. And and one of the the things that. We just wanted to be aware about, with with at least doing it for this first year is we didn't want to be too. Overburdened, burdened some with the TDM requirements while we're adjusting to the new system. So I think it's something that can certainly be increased later or. But but it's something we we just felt like, while we're adjusting, we wanted to make it, you know, kind of seamless as possible. But it's certainly something I think we should look at and and, you know, possibly raise in the future. Another thing I'll add to is is one of the things based off of feedback from Public Works that we did. Was specify that a third of the points have to be physical improvements. And so some of those physical improvements are are quite expensive. And so that's something. I think we should be aware about and think about. When trying to determine the the TDM point totals.
Gotcha. Thanks, Tony.
Any, any other questions from commissioners? All right, so you know, I have a few. Tony, I I know I've been emailing you about these and I sort of tried to give you a heads up that I was going to be asking. I was hoping to maybe get the the answers just privately and and not have to have a whole discussion about it during the commission, but. I I I think even after the the reply that you sent, I still have these questions. During the Complan Committee, I was, this past meeting. I was unable to attend. I was out of town. And I I have, you know, during the last planning commission meeting, I think there were several questions asked around the issue of equity and some of the policies that were. Proposed. I think Commissioner Presley or Commissioner Mitchell had asked about additional information as well as I had, and. It just seems to have not really been addressed in any way. And so I'm wondering if you can comment on. You know, what the what the potential impact is for. Low income members and some of these policies, specifically the unbundling. I think there's a generalization that it's just gonna somehow get landlords to reduce rent. And I just think that's a a false correlation that 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 by unbundling somehow it's going to get landlords to. Say, okay, if we are now charging $1,400 for rent. And now we have to unbundle. Now we're going to charge $1,200 for rent. When I think it's more realistic to see that they'll just charge $1,400 per rent and then charge an additional $100 for the parking. I've I've been trying to. Get. You know, something that supports that assertion that it does reduce rents. I know you sent me that article. I read through the most of it, the the 30 page article that you sent, and it really doesn't even hit on the subject. So I'm just wondering if you can touch on that.
Yeah, sure. Um, so I think with parking and the question of unbundling, I think. One thing that everyone has to to kind of realize is that you pay for parking no matter what, right? And so when you bundle parking, what what they're making you do is pay for parking as a part of your rent, whether or not you own a car. What unbundling does is a, you're going to pay for parking separate from rent. And so how that can lower costs is for people that choose to have, that choose to not have a car or maybe have only one car. So in your example, about, you know, 1,700 a month rent. You know, if that's just the base rent for someone and they don't have a car, they would have to pay that, but maybe if it's unbundled. Rent goes to 1,500 and then they, you know, $200 for your parking space. And then if you had more cars, you could choose to get more parking spaces if you would like. Another thing I think. I should state is that zoning isn't retroactive, right? So if we pass this zoning ordinance with unbundling, it would only apply to projects. That are built after the ordinance is passed. So. It wouldn't require, you know, people of existing buildings, owners of existing buildings to go back. And unbundle their parking now and and charge something separate. They're they're free to do that if they wish to, but that wouldn't be required by any ordinance changes.
Right. And again, what what I've been asking for is, I'm sure other cities have. Enacted unbundling statutes or or. Regulations. And to me, it just doesn't seem like that's what's going to happen. And I'm more than happy to be proven wrong about it if there is proof that this these unbundling have actually resulted in the type of. Pricing that you indicated. It just see, it just seems like that's not what's going to happen. It seems like if if there is an opportunity for a dollar to be made. That that's what's going to occur. And and I, it it it, my larger concern is that. When we discuss the idea of parking maximums. The answer that we got from from you in part was that. We don't, we don't want to disturb. Even though we, it's almost common sense that if you put parking maximums, it's going to achieve probably the optimal goal of reducing parking. And achieving all the goals that we're we're sort of aiming for, but. The answer that we got is we don't want to disturb development. And we don't want to enact a policy in which we don't really know how that's going to impact. You know, future development in the city and that it might just result. An additional and and a ton of work for city staff in which developers are just coming to the city for conditional use permits. Or for some form of variance and then all essentially all 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 the time is spent doing that. So we're not okay, you know, on sort of. In advance, in trying to advance the larger goals of the city, we're not okay burdening developers. However, when I asked a question about how unbundling is going to impact. You know, low income members, the answer that I'm getting is, well, me, and I believe what you said in your response is maybe that $1,700 apartment is going to become. $1,500. And that maybe to me sounds like we're sort of hoping that that's what's going to happen. And so we're willing to take a risk. In enacting a policy that might impact, have a disparate impact on low income members. And but we're also not willing to take that same type of. Risk with the developers. And that to me sets a very, a double standard and it's, I believe it's unfair. So I, if if there is studies that support what you're proposing, I am more than happy to review them. And I am more than happy to look over them. But it just, you know, if you live in the east side where the where trans, you don't have the A line, you don't have the transit, you don't have the light rail necessarily accessible to you. And you're saying, well. You know, now you might not even, now you're inconveniencing because you're saying, you know, we're trying to reduce parking overall. And so now someone might have to, you know, I I think the study that you sent to me was that indicated something along the lines of. Make parking accessible on the street or somewhere nearby their apartment. It just, it it seems unfair.
So a couple of things. So my issue with maximums, you bring up the east side, which is a great point for this. The, there's the same issue with minimums is also exists with maximums, right? What what we're doing with maximums is arbitrarily saying that you can't go over this amount of parking, right? And that might work in areas of the city where there's, there's good transit access, there's uses nearby where people can walk. But somewhere in the east side where it's lower density, people meet, may need to drive and. You know, a business that starts may need a higher parking ratio. And so what I'm cautioning is not getting too aggressive with it early without without having a chance for us to look at it. In greater detail. And so I I'd be happy to come back and do maximums, but I think we should. It it should be informed by data and should be informed by what's happening in our market. And not just done arbitrarily. And so that that's my view on on that. And then again, with unbundling, I'll just. Stress again, parking isn't free. You you pay for it no matter what. And so you can either pay for it as a part of your housing costs or you can pay for it separately. And that that's what unbundling does. And there's not a whole lot of extensive research on the effect in other cities because it's relatively new. And there hasn't been that many cities that have done it yet, but it's something that's growing in popularity as cities are updating their codes.
Right. And and this will be the last thing, and I think what you just said there in terms of we need to enact policies based on. You know, empirical evidence that show that they work. That's all I'm asking for in terms of unbundling. And and you know, I I hear what you're saying, that it's a new policy. But it it, we. It it seemed like the equity issue, and no offense to you, Tony, but it just seems like the equity issue and the questions that we posed. Sort of were just disregarded and and in the memo that was given to the Complan Committee, it wasn't even addressed. Almost in the hope that we would just, it it felt to me almost in the hope that we would just forget about it. And so because those questions are not necessarily answered with regards to unbundling. And because unbundling appears to be, to me, a double standard in this entire policy. I I cannot, I I won't support this. So that's what I'll say about it and I'll move on. But Commissioner Grill.
This is Commissioner Grill. Um, I'm wondering, I put my hand down. I'm wondering if this is something, and Luis, you can tell me if this, if I'm overstepping here. But I'm wondering if in the in the case that this makes it through today and then we make it through the city council. Could we ask Tony and planning staff to come back and say. A year and give us an update maybe on, like, you know. Parking development over the course of the last year and then maybe the cost of housing. As as far as we're aware, because I know there are places where this is done and and a lot of the market. Pressures sort of. I'm not going to say take care of it because Commissioner Ringo Morales is, I think his concerns are valid, but I do think because. Land use changes are slow, development is slow, we're not going to have a lot of test balloons for this for a little while. And if maybe in a year we could come back and sort of. Be briefed on what the impacts were, then we could see if there are things that we need to address or or tinker with. Because, you know, we are one city in a metropolitan area, which many places don't have unbundled parking. So like, we would have things to compare to. We would have like some. Controls on it, I guess, to to sort of see how this is going. And I'm just wondering if if that, I I don't think it's going to solve sort of. I'm not going to assume that it's going to solve the issue being brought up here today, but I'm wondering if that gives some people a little bit of comfort with the vote that like. It's it's one vote, it's it's one zoning plan change and we have opportunities to change it and and tinker with it as time goes on.
So I'll defer to Luis on on whether we come back. I think. When we say we can come back to it, it took four years to put this in front of us. So in that interim, whatever happens with this policy and however it is that it plays out, it's going to have impact on everyday people. And and what we're saying is that we're okay. Testing it and seeing how it impacts low income people really without knowing. But we're not okay testing it on developers. And that to me is the unfairness of it. So I'll defer to Luis on whether we can come back to it or not. But any anytime we we speak and say, let's, let's come back to it and see how it happens. Let's also remember how long it took. To put this before us and how long it's going to take to correct it. And that in the interim, all that is occurring. People are going to be impacted by this. So. Luis?
Yes, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Great conversation. One of the main reasons why we're not recommending further amendments in in those areas that. That have been suggested, as Tony talked about, are because we want to get the benefit of. Getting data and seeing how this is working. That said, you know, there's been quite a bit of literature about unbundling and how that does. Support housing production and sort of not. You know, just the burdens of of providing parking to to a minimum standard. What that does to a pro forma. We, you know, with with zoning, we don't. Automatically have the rents of, you know, the units produced or the. Sort of that that piece. So that's going to be a data constraint, but we certainly can look at projects. Developed since. Whatever we do with parking, you know, reduce requirement or eliminate requirement goes into effect and see. You know, how many of them have provided parking, how much, how many have provided none? Where, just to remind to the commissioners that even in places where we haven't had a minimum requirement. We've always had parking included in in projects, so it's. Still an amenity and still something the market is is looking for, even if it if it's reduced to like, you know, one below one space per unit. So certainly we could come back in a year and report on sort of, these are the projects that have come through and this is how we understand. You know, is there a delta? Do we see any noticeable difference in terms of what projects are providing on parking? Where are the projects, things like that?
Awesome. And one of the things that we're doing, kind of, while our research analyst is is really leading up. Is better tracking of projects. So one of the things that took a long time with this study is I re-reviewed. Everyone, mostly America. And others re-reviewed two years of site plans to get the data. For the study. And so if we can track these things on an ongoing basis, that's going to make it quicker to to figure out kind of what happened. Without as much work as I had to do on this study, so. Oh, and another thing to add is you could make a motion to. You know, remove that from the ordinance. That'd be an easy change for us to make.
Commissioner Mitchell?
As you know, I, good morning, Chair, and thank you, Tony. As you know, I voted no, and I'm still not changed in my mind about this. Study because it of, it's it's like, and I'm old enough to. tell you that when they changed who did your groceries, you know, we used to have a person who packed your groceries. And they said that change was because it's cheaper, you know, it, it, the cost for the groceries go down. But as, as time has gone on, we don't see groceries going down, they continue to rise. So I think sometimes we do make decisions thinking that things are going to be cheaper and really in the long, in the long run, it does not become cheaper. And two, that it does impact low income people more, especially when we think about parking. So I have not changed my mind about where I stand on this. So I just wanted everyone to know that because I was the one who said no in the, in the, in the previous meeting. So I have not changed my mind. I think we need to have some more information. I think that, I think that this is not going to help low income people with rents. I just don't see it happening because of developers. I just don't see it going to be something that's going to help low income people in the long run. I just don't see it.
Commissioner Taglia.
Yes, Chair, that, that is essentially the crux of my concern around, around the proposals, the way they're written in that I fully understand that zoning code that requires us to provide parking and assumes that cars are the default mode of transportation is fundamentally flawed and needs changing, no question. But those trips still need to happen. And research has shown that having mobility, having access particularly to employment opportunities and childcare opportunities is crucial to other mobility. It's crucial to allowing people to, to raise their income. And if we take away these provisions in, in, in housing on the, on the, on the grounds of affordability and don't provide substitutes, don't provide ways for people to complete their trips without using a vehicle, then I think what we're doing is, is really inconveniencing just that section of the population who cannot afford the, the, the apartment with, with the built-in parking or cannot afford the accessory parking and find it less and less possible and convenient to, to, to operate a vehicle. I mentioned I lived in London all my life. In that city, the density and development followed transit. In other words, they built an underground subway line and then people found it, found themselves able to give up their vehicles. And it was sort of that way around. Which is why I, I have so many questions about the TDMP strategies. You know, I, I suppose I share Commissioner Cantor's concern that the TDMP point totals aren't aggressive enough and aren't comprehensive enough if, if, if they're going to be used at all. But the idea that the market will simply sort of provide these things, well, the, the market could provide all kinds of TDMP strategies right now. And of course it doesn't. There is a strong need to incentivize these. And I have concerns around, well, why are we requiring TDMPs for only two years, for example, which is under sixty-three dot one two two, when buildings have a lifespan measured in decades? You know, if you build a parking stall and that's one way you're dealing with that journey, then you're required to build it, it stays in place for the life of the building, you have ongoing costs. Why are we not requiring TDMPs for the entire life of, of the project? Why are we not checking on in in five years and 10 years as well? And why are we not requiring TDMPs for smaller buildings? Certainly you can have a larger building with more than twenty-five, one twenty-five required parking spaces or whatever that threshold is. If you have a larger building, say, you know, a multifamily that takes up a third of a block. But if you have a number of smaller infill lots on the same block, shouldn't they also be required to substitute for those parking journeys? Shouldn't they also be required to invest into our system and improve the substitutes available? So I, I have a lot of, I, I have a lot of concerns about the sufficient robustness of the TDMP strategies and I would like to see those made more robust and more widely applicable before I feel comfortable on this.
So I'll just respond to two things. So the, the TDMPs that, that would be required for the life of the building, that two years is just where we set the reporting at. So it's basically you, you get that time to implement. And one of the things that we do is we get a security deposit with every TDM based on their budget. And so what that two years is, is in that time, we'll check that it's implemented and then release that money back to them. But it is something that is, it, it's required for the life of the building. And if they wanted to make changes, they would have to come back to the, to the city. And then another thing I forgot to say about the threshold and in terms of working with, with other departments. DSI, our zoning division is, is quite short-staffed right now. And so one of the things that they requested is that we, we don't get too aggressive with the TDM at this point because they don't have the staff to implement it. And I mean, if they can't implement it, then, you know, we can require it, but we're not going to be able to follow up on every single one. And so we might, you know, might miss some. And so that, that was part of the rationale for setting the threshold at where we set it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hood.
Thank you, Chair. So I just kind of wanted a question on process. So are we at the point in the meeting where we are asking questions to staff? Where will we close this period and then have our separate discussion? Many of the comments feel like comments and not necessarily questions directed at staff. So I just had that as a question as a procedural matter.
Yeah, I think right now we can make comments to staff and have them try to clarify anything that we have about the, any questions that we have about, or concerns that we have about the proposal. At any point, anybody could make a motion either to approve the the parking study as is been proposed by the compliance committee. Then we can take, we would then call for a second and then we can have a discussion on the motion. But at this point, I, I believe it's just open discussion.
Okay, thank you. I do have a statement that I would like to make. First of all, I want to thank city staff. This has been a long time coming. I remember three, four years ago, it felt when I was on a district council hearing this being proposed. So it's, it's good, it's good to see these things move their way through the system, even if that is a little slow. I think that parking minimums cause immense harm to cities. And they worsen our car dependence, they hinder infill development, they undermine walkable neighborhoods, they block transit oriented development, and they make building real estate so much more expensive. And what that does is that puts pressure on building affordable units, which is something that we desperately need right now. I think there's nothing equitable about making cities car dependent. That's a burden for people who can't afford a car. And that's the reason that the city of Minneapolis City Council used when they just voted thirteen to zero. Minneapolis City Council voted thirteen to zero to remove parking minimums a month or two ago. Parking minimums add five thousand dollars per surface lot, thirty-five K if there's a garage spot. And the average renter in Minneapolis pays a hundred and forty-two dollars per month for parking, whether they use it or not. I think that one of the things that we need to consider is that parking minimums aren't a panacea. By themselves, they're not going to necessarily reduce parking that's provided, but it does provide flexibility. I think that's what we need right now. Nine out of ten times, land use change is slow and it's very piecemeal. So once this policy goes into effect, really, it's going to take decades really to see itself play out. So don't expect anything overnight. I think that eliminating parking, it enables low parking and zero parking buildings where the market demands it. And I think generally what you're going to see is those buildings going into your places that are more dense and they're already more walkable. And what that's going to do is, in, in my mind, that's going to make affordable housing much more attainable across the city. Not to mention, one of the things that I think has not been mentioned, that I think we absolutely need to mention, is that eliminating parking minimums aligns so much with our city's climate and greenhouse gas emission goals. I don't think that we can talk about parking without talking about climate change. And climate change is really, I mean, I don't, I don't want to spend time talking about climate change. But I mean, that's, it's really the biggest issue that we need to deal with. And this is one small way at a local level that we can help address this. I think that car infrastructure, as we have it now, with parking requirements predominantly serves white and wealthier residents and commuters from the suburbs that use our city roads and our infrastructure oftentimes at our expense. I think that if we want to focus on equity, we need to focus on de-prioritizing automobiles in our city. That's why I fully support the elimination of all parking minimums. And as Commissioner Riley said, it's been a long time coming.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Hood. Are there any additional questions or comments to share before, or anybody would like to make a motion?
This is Commissioner Grill. I will make the motion to forward this on to the full city council and approve the minimum.
All right. And I see Commissioner Hood is raising his hand.
I'll second Commissioner Grill.
So motion made by Commissioner Grill, seconded by Commissioner Hood. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, I'll just, I just, I, I do think it's a very perplexing, as Commissioner Hood very eloquently stated, I think, you know, there's, there's the larger issue that we're trying to address here. And, and I just want to clarify that my comments were meant to what I felt was an unfairness and, and who were asking to take that burden on in terms of inconveniencing them without having, I, I think it's, it's accepted that we need to move away from motor vehicles. But the question is, is who bears that inconvenience? And I think this policy certainly causes low income people to bear an unfair burden of that. And that's what I feel is unfair about it. Just because it is a legislative matter, I did talk to one of the leading developers of, in the city here of affordable housing. And when I explained to her, or just asked a question about unbundling, she laughed at me at the thought of that developers would charge less. And that pretty much told me everything I needed to know about it. So Commissioner Host, and then if there's any other questions, we can take a vote.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I've been landlord for over twenty years and it feels to me like if you're a person that doesn't have a car, and I, and I operate low income housing, some section eight, probably almost all of it NOAA. And you, you, you're not forced to buy anymore. Is this immediately going to change the market where the total unit plus parking is, is going to go down? I'd expect that to stay about the same. There, there's an exception to that, which I'll touch on here in a second. But if you're out shopping and you're not, don't have a car, which in my community, a third of households don't have a car, eventually market forces are going to push down on this. But to get that, we'd need more housing, which we're really short on right now. So that's, that's part of the issue there. The one place maybe where it won't, where, where Chair, I would probably agree with you, is maybe under section eight. Because section eight will not, doesn't count parking when they do calculations around it. But, but other places, I mean, one way I'm forced to, to, to buy a tomato and a pear, and if I'm not going to use the pear, I don't want to have to pay for it anymore. And so eventually that's, that's going to get separated out. Also, we're, there's still the possibility of parking on the street. We have not eliminated that. And I also expect that, you know, developers aren't going to go from, you know, a hundred parking spots to zero, but they may go from a hundred to seventy-five or from fifty to thirty-five or something like that. So I just, I, I actually, I, I see this as a, you know, again, we don't have a lot of studies on this yet, but eventually this should have an effect for, for, for housing that becomes more affordable. I, I'm kind of looking at the study you sent here, but I'm just not quite seeing it yet. And there's just not a lot there. I, I just don't quite see it.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Host. Any additional comments? Commissioner Grill.
This is, thank you, Chair. This is probably the last thing I'll, I'll try to bring up on this. I think one of our biggest impediments to housing, just to echo the other Commissioners, is, are some of these parking requirements, the need to fit parking on some of these parcels, the cost of parking when you're trying to do something that benefits low income folks. I think being able to eliminate some of that cost may make the difference between being able to finance something and not being able to finance something, between something economically feasible and not being feasible. And if we are able to eliminate some of those impediments and try to get to the root of some of these issues, which is our lack of housing, I think this is a good step forward for us. I don't think it's going to solve all of our problems. And I think it's probably going to require some tweaks along the way as we learn what impacts we do and don't want out of this policy. But I do think it's one of our best options that we have available at the moment. And I think this is a big step forward for us in the city and our ability to more appropriately reuse some of this land that's currently devoted to cars and not to people.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Grill. Commissioner Riley.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to check in and make sure that Commissioner Mitchell got to say, okay, what did I want to say before I spoke?
Commissioner Mitchell. I believe he had her hand raised and hadn't put it down since she last spoke. So I'll call on you, Commissioner Riley.
I'm sorry, I, I had unmute. I'm sorry, but I'm sorry. Do you want to go or I can go? Which one?
No, please, please go. Your hand was up before mine, so please go.
Okay, I'm so sorry. I, I didn't unmute myself. So this is my comment. I, I I just believe we're missing the issue around low, we keep talking about this and not talking about the people. And I, I just know low income people drive. I, they will get cars. They need to have places to park. Parking on, yes, parking on the street, yes, in the summer is fine, but parking on the street in the winter is not very, it's not very, you know, it's not very convenient. So.
If you can hear us, Commissioner Mitchell.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So I'm just saying that, and I do not believe developers will develop more housing with this, with having the, the restrictions removed. I just don't think that. Developers are normally about making the bottom line and that's making money and we all know that. And I just don't think they're going to build more housing. And when we talk about affordable housing, again, we're always thinking that sixty AMI and eighty AMI, when we're, the thirty AMI is not the discussion we, we have. And that is the housing that is not being developed is the thirty AMI. So I just don't believe that this is going to help low income people by building more affordable housing. And that is my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Riley. Go ahead, go ahead, Tony.
So one, one piece you might want to check out in the report is, is in the very beginning, I talk about housing and some of the thirty percent AMI projects that we've actually done in St. Paul. And it's rare, you're, you're correct, it is hard to do. But one of the things I'd point out about those projects is the extremely low partner ratios. And I personally worked on three of those. And parking, we, we need to do variances for two of them. And then one of them could do it by right because they're on the green line. And then parking was, was an issue with those developments. And if they had to make, meet the parking requirements like a market rate project, I, I don't believe that would have happened. So I'll just put that out there.
Commissioner Riley.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Tony, for, for adding that. I just, I want to express a couple of things. One is that I think, as a, so as a, as a person who tries really hard to think critically and be an ally and an advocate for those who have less than I do, which is, and they usually have less than I do because I'm white and they are not. And as a professional planner, I really struggle and I appreciate the conversation because what I hear are many people of color saying that there's not, this is not okay. And I hear a lot of sort of us more, you know, progressive white people saying that this is a good thing. And, and I'm, and so I'm sitting with that tension and I really appreciate everyone bringing this up. But I think to Tony's point about the, the, we'll call buildability of a structure that houses people, especially at of a structure that houses people, especially at lower income rates, I think the city's money and the county's money and the state's money will be able to go farther in producing more units in the long run if they don't have to provide parking, especially if that's underground. I think we also have to remember that none of the existing built environment and the parking that is here is being talked about as, you know, well, now that I don't have to have three parking spaces behind my triplex, I'm not going to charge you for those parking spaces. I don't think that, you know, that's the concern. I think what we're seeing in, in the region generally, and in St. Paul specifically, is just simply not enough affordable places for people to live at any level under, you know, like 110% of area median income. And so I just, I, I appreciate the comments from the folks who, who are seeing people who have, you know, are struggling to find places to park. We have a tremendous issue with people having places to park in the wintertime. I encourage neighborhood organizations to, and PED staff to work together, and DSI staff to work together to figure out solutions to some of those issues. But I just do think that what we need to do is take the long view. And if I look at like where my parents live in New York City, or as Commissioner Tagheev talked about London, once there's enough density to support people to not have cars, there will be more ability to advocate for more transit lines and more effective transportation that's not just auto-oriented. Minnesota was developed initially as an auto-oriented state. We're the first place to have indoor malls with seats of parking lots, and that's not just because it's cold. And, and I think you're right, the market will generally dictate the prices. But if the development itself doesn't need to provide the exorbitant cost of digging underground for additional parking spaces, we will be able to create more units in the long run. And so I hope that the long view works out for everybody here. But I, I appreciate everybody's, very much everybody's comments and know that I am thinking about that as we move forward. So thank you very much.
So I see Commissioner DeJoy, and then Commissioner Riley, you raised so many good points. I, I'll come back to your comments, but Commissioner DeJoy?
Yes, thank you Chair. I totally agree with Commissioner Mitchell on her point about folks with cars and having to need cars, especially if you're working and you have to drop one child at school and another at daycare and it's, and then having the need to park. However, there's, and I'm torn on this because where I'm working over here on the east side on Payne Avenue, we have a lot of existing buildings that in order to change the use, very often it requires having off-street parking. And these older buildings, some of them dating back to the late 1800s, don't have parking, and the buildings are right next to each other. And so when a, a tenant wants to repurpose that bu- biz, uh, building for a different bill, business, sorry, it requires off-street parking. And very often we run into this and, and it's not available. And so in the last seven years, we've had to create additional parking in order to support those buildings. So on one hand, I really like the fact that we can reduce it so we can have businesses and we can have tenants that purchase their buildings without the need to have to create more parking. But I also see that there was a demand for it, that we, we actually had to do three different parking lots to support it. So I, I don't know. I think I'm going to vote in favor of this, just to see if we could change the dynamics of that.
So I think Commissioner Riley and Commissioner DeJoy, you, you guys both bring up really, really good points. And I think what, to Commissioner DeJoy's point, I think what makes this maybe a little bit more complicated is that this parking study is sort of an omnibus bill of various regulations. So it's, it's a, it reduces parking, the parking minimums. That's sort of the larger issue that we're discussing. But it also deals with the unbundling portion. It deals with the RM2, removing structured parking for, for developers to be able to build bigger and higher if, if they include affordable housing into their developments. So there's a lot of different policies within this item that we're voting on today. And I think in general, for the reasons that Commissioner DeJoy stated, you know, I think it's, it's helpful for those type of buildings that, you know, that are either vacant or could really benefit from having parking reductions so that they could have a more functional use. I also think it would be beneficial for developers who are, you know, might want to build a triplex or a duplex and can provide additional housing to the city if they don't have to provide, and, and they just don't want to provide or can't provide the parking, and that, that's an additional burden on them. Certainly it all helps in that way. With the larger goal of one, getting more housing, but also then two, reducing parking and driving around the city. To Commissioner Riley's point, what I'll say is, is I, I really appreciate his recognition of the dichotomy that sometimes we have within the planning commission. It is something that we have discussed during steering, during our steering meeting. And so I appreciate some, Commissioner Riley voicing it for everybody to hear and just recognize. And also understand that we, that everybody's input is valuable, and everybody's coming from a different perspective. And so that's what makes this commission with 21 members, or the capacity to have 21 members, the commission that it is. And, and everybody can provide sort of their anecdotal experience of how they believe a policy will have an impact on individuals. With that said, I will also say that we, you know, I remember, I remember back when I was in college, I, I read a statistic that St. Paul was one of the most segregated cities in, in the country in terms of just demographics and where people live. And that type of situation doesn't just arise naturally. I don't think, I think it, it occurs out of policies, small policies like the one that we're voting on today, and how, how we approach them. And all I'm asking is, is that we are very intentional in that the policies that we do actually have the intended result that we're asking them to do. And I don't believe that this policy with regards to the unbundle, with, with regards to the unbundling will do that. I also don't, I, oh, I do see that it's going to help development in the way that I just noted in terms of if, if a developer can't afford parking or just doesn't want to provide it because it'll save them money, I do think it'll help that way. But one of the statistics that really stood out to me immediately when I read the, the introduction that Tony provided back in February was that the city doesn't have a lack of parking. The city has an abundance of parking. In other words, even with the parking minimums that we had currently, developers are not building less. There, there, there was like a, I believe it was a 20% surplus of more parking. So to the extent that it's going to really help reduce parking and driving, we could be doing more things, and again, it goes to the maximums, to, to try to reduce that. And the, the ultimate message that I got again, it was a double standard, and that's why I'm still a no. But I'll defer to additional individuals for comments. Commissioner Tagheev?
Yeah, I want to come back on these points and say I wholeheartedly agree. I mean, I'm so conflicted on this vote because I agree so wholeheartedly with, for example, the points Commissioner Hood made. Completely. We need to transition away from a car-dependent culture. Their environmental impacts, just devoting so much of our land area to, to car parking, storage, and movement impedes walkability, it impedes density, it impedes all the things we want. And I think Commissioner Riley made some great points about the kind of taking the long view. We, we do have an overabundance of parking. We have a lot of parking in the city. And even if we do nothing essentially, just, you know, eliminate parking minimums and put nothing in its place, nothing changes about the physical infrastructure that's, that's here today, right? This changes development by development. On the other hand, I, I have a lot of sympathy for the arguments that were made in terms of, you know, if you, if you just take away people's ability to move and store, store cars and don't put in investment and infrastructure alternatives, you know, those journeys aren't going away. And if you look at the statistics about the way Minneapolis and St. Paul are configured versus, say, some coastal cities like, like New York, what, what you see is that essentially vehicle ownership is, in, in the cities is, is income dependent. So in cities like New York, it's density-driven. In New York, you know, if you're, if, if you're, if you're, if you live in a dense part of the city, you're, you're more likely to be vehicleless. Whereas in Minneapolis and St. Paul, that's not true. Car, vehicle ownership only drops off with, with, below about 30,000 a year in income. So there's, there's a really clear rationale I see in the data that says if you just eliminate parking minimums for, for lower income and, and those developments of 30% AMI, that would, that would achieve a real saving in unnecessary cost. That makes complete sense. But for, for everybody else, what, what we're trying to do is engage in this kind of magical thinking, saying that we can just change these things and not require aggressive substitution, aggressive infrastructure investment, which will take decades of its own. If we're ready to transition as a society away from vehicles, we need the transit, we need alternatives, and we need that money to come from both private and public investments. You know, I've, I've lived in London for 30-plus years. I lived in Manhattan for two, three years before I came here. I, I wanted to live in a place where I didn't have to have a motor vehicle, or I didn't have to get around by car. Here, here, I, I specifically chose a walkable district. I bought a bicycle. I cycled to the grocery store. I have tried to take my family downtown on the bus and waited half an hour while the bus hasn't arrived, texted the information system and got nothing back. And it took literally one and a half hours of transit to get downtown and back on the bus. And, and we're just not there. And so I'm deeply conflicted on this vote because I don't see that we are being comprehensive and aggressive enough on our incentives to developers to, and, and the city indeed, to, to require the kind of investment that is going to deliver the future that we also desperately want. And I would like to see more aggressive and more comprehensive requirements on developments of every level to, to kind of make this substitute investment. So I am deeply conflicted, and that's all I'll say.
Thank you, Commissioner Tagheev. Any additional discussion? All right, seeing none, I think we can move on to a roll call. Sonya?
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Anderson? Mr. DeJoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Grill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner McMurphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Perryman?
Yes.
Commissioner Presley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ritzberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Tagheev?
None.
Commissioner Yang?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantner?
Yes.
Chair Wrangle Hall?
No.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I apologize, I missed my call. My vote is yes.
All right, so that motion does carry, and the the parking study as recommended by the Comprehensive Neighborhood Planning Committee will be forwarded on to City Council. The next item on the next item on the agenda is the Transportation Committee. Commissioner Ritzberg?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Just briefly, I have a very, very brief report. And that is just to say, our June 28th meeting, Transportation Committee meeting was canceled. Our next meeting is July 12th. The agenda is to be determined, so stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ritzberg. The next item on the agenda is the Communication and Nominations Committee. I don't think Commissioner Wood's here today, so I'll turn to Louise.
Yes, Chair. Actually, the, the committee, it ended up just being Commissioner Mitchell and I met this morning and had a great conversation. We had some conversation around some additional engagement opportunities and venues, particularly with the African-American community. So that's a great input. And I, I'm sure we will have a follow-up meeting soon. We are working with DSI staff to relaunch a workshop around planning and zoning. So coordinating with them, have some input, I think I mentioned previously, from some district councils on what would be the most helpful. So I probably would bring that to the, the Comms, Noms Committee in the future for, for awareness and input. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Louise. Moving on to Task Force and Liaison Report. Grill?
Chair, this is Commissioner Grill. Did you say Commissioner DeJoy and then Commissioner Grill?
Yeah, but if you want to go first, go ahead.
Oh, no, Commissioner DeJoy, I can go ahead.
Okay, sorry. I was talking, but I was on mute. Sorry. The Hillcrest Redevelopment Master Plans Community Advisory Committee met on June 15th. That was our 15th meeting, and the bulk of the meeting was focused on sustainability, where our consultant Mo Convery and planner Mike Richardson presented an overview of the draft Sustainability Chapter for the master plan and how it relates to the Port Authority's LEED certification efforts and planned covenants with site users. Monty Hillman from St. Paul Port Authority emphasized that the sustainability commitment is a big deal, and there is substantial work remaining to vet the financial and market feasibility of that. He explained that the Port Authority uses covenants to ensure their sustainable design priorities and that they're implemented and maintained in developments that are sold to others. So there was quite a bit of conversation about that. One CAC member raised the transportation elements and requested that we have more aggressive strategies for alternative transportation. For example, support alternative transportation options. And he felt that the goal of 2% of charging stations for electric vehicles was too low and that we should aim higher. So there was a lot of discussion about that. Monty Hillman did weigh in and said that they, they will aim for about 4% of parking spaces for electric vehicles in order to achieve the carbon-neutral status. He said that they need, need to provide parking because of their aggressive job goals. And although it would be great if they can improve the transit access for workers, they also hope that the workforce housing and onsite, or housing onsite will allow people to walk to their jobs. So we had some discussion around that. Mike said that he anticipates addressing some of these transportation concerns in either the Master Plans Transportation Chapter or the Sustainability Chapter. And mentioned that the 2% number comes from the LEED framework. Let's see, we discussed community priority number 19, which is about not competing with the retail that exists on Wiper Avenue. However, the market study did find a demand for about 20,000 square feet of additional res, retail, but felt that the development of that site and the number of residents moving in there would in fact add and, and help. add and help the White Bear Avenue retail. And that there was, it was also mentioned that there's a lot of retail missing on White Bear Avenue and the additional residents at Hillcrest would probably boost that. So the other thing I wanted to announce is that the District Two Planning Council, the St. Paul Port Authority and Councilmember Nelsie Yang are co-sponsoring community conversations that started, I think they started on June twenty-second. They're running like every two weeks until the first week of August. I posted a website link for those conversations. If, this would be to boost community engagement and those are going to be happening at the Hillcrest or the Hayden Heights Recreation Center. And that's my report. I don't know if Bill's on the call, if he wanted to add anything.
Nothing to add, but I will put that link in the chat here if I can find it in a minute. Commissioner Grill.
Hi, this is Commissioner Grill. So our next River View Stationary Planning Task Force meeting is July thirteenth from six to eight P M. There's not an agenda for that item just yet. And then earlier this week, the River View Group did hold an open house, a virtual open house to talk about the River View Corridor Modern Streetcar Project and provide and an opportunity to provide feedback to the project team. In addition, there was public comment on the purpose and need document and that those comments were able to be submitted from May seventeenth to today. So I believe it has closed business today. So if you still have comments on the purpose and need, the draft purpose and need technical report, you can still submit those today. And all this information is available on the Ramsey County River View Corridor website. And then I would hope in our next meeting, I have an agenda for our July thirteenth meeting that I can provide to the group in advance of the Stationery Task Force meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grill. So moving on to old business, new business. Before we adjourn, I'd just like to, Commissioner Perryman, are you still on?
Yes.
So it's my understanding based on an email that I received that today will be your last meeting?
Yes.
So I just wanted
It's my retirement.
So thank you for turning your screen on. I see Commissioner Grill is sort of crying, or at least crying with her fingers. I wanted to just take a moment to thank you for your time and the commission. I think you before I did and with you. I really appreciated your comments throughout the years. And what I'll say, I think what I told you in a private conversation was that you tend to be very direct with your comments in terms of when you decide to speak up and whenever you do, it certainly got my attention. So thank you for everything that you've done throughout the years. Thank you for speaking up in the times that you did. And we wish you the best of luck. And I don't know if you want to take a moment to provide any comments. I know that's not necessarily your style, but the floor is yours, sir.
No, yeah, thank you, Vatagar. It would have been my term, but technically ended this year, so it would have been two years, two terms, six years total. But I definitely learned from people before me. I'm not good with names, but many great people before me and part of my decision, yeah, just having more time to do other things, but seeing the new names that have popped up. Of course, much respect to the people that have been with me, but Commissioner Tagheev, Commissioner Mitchell, Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Holt, a lot of the things you've said in these most recent months. Like I know we're going to be in a good place. Also, yeah, continue with Grill and then Prayer and everyone else involved in all the aspects. So, yeah, I said a great time and I think, I feel we made a lot of difference. And I think the commission will continue to make a lot of difference in the community with the varying voices that are serving. So best of luck and I'm still in St. Paul. I'm not leaving or anything, so, yeah.
Well, thank you for your time. I don't know if anybody would like to say anything to Commissioner Perryman, Commissioner Grill.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Grill. I just, from the minute that I joined the conference and Neighborhood Planning Committee, Commissioner Perryman, I think a lot like you, Chair, when he did have something to say, I think we all shut up for a minute and we're a very chatty group. I think we all paused and if Adrian had something to say, I think we all really took it in and thought about it a lot. And I know that Adrian has like taken some stands this year on things that matter and were important to him. And I know that the outcome wasn't what he wanted and it just that because Adrian was the person pushing for it, I think a lot of us spent a lot more time and a lot more things reflecting on like where we stood in it and how we felt about the different projects. So I just, I really appreciate your perspective. I think you mattered more to the commission than I think you maybe even realize and that you're going to be very, very missed. So thank you for all of your time and your assistance.
Commissioner DeJoy.
Yeah, I echo everything that Commissioner Grill said. But I also remember when the first idea came up of doing planning commission meetings remotely and you brought it up and it was immediately dismissed. And guess what? Look at us today. So kudos to you. Although it was your idea, unfortunately, it was the pandemic that forced this, but you brought a whole, I mean, a lot more people I think have attended these meetings because of that ability. So thank you for that.
And somehow I think Commissioner DeJoy just blamed the entire pandemic on Commissioner Perryman.
I can't take credit for the pandemic.
No, I did not say that. I said it was the pandemic that forced it, but it was Adrian Perryman's idea to do these meetings remotely.
Yeah, so hopefully, yeah, instance of this will continue possibly. So even if it is in person, bring a laptop, webcam. Hey, I can see Simon's face.
I don't use this.
This is a special occasion, Adrian.
Chair, did you give me permission?
Yeah, go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you. I just, you know, both being able to serve you while I was staff and then being able to serve with you on the commission has been a great honor and privilege. And so thank you for your time and your service and commitment to St. Paul. And I'm glad you're not going anywhere, unlike some people leaving the commission in the next couple of weeks. But so thank you from the bottom of my heart, both as a resident and a former PED staffer.
Commissioner Said.
Thank you, Chair. Well, thank you, Commissioner Berryman, for serving. I know, I know you work together and the other side, but well, thank you for serving and we wish you the best.
Thank you.
All right, and if any, there's no additional comments. This hopefully won't be the last time we see Commissioner Perryman. Oh, Commissioner Ritzberg.
Sure, you're saying something beautiful right now that we can't hear.
Yeah, I think you're muted, Commissioners.
Yep, you're definitely muted, Commissioner Ritzberg.
He's commenting on my beautiful physical appearance.
The music that you play.
You're muted, Jeff.
Oh, for gosh sakes.
Now you're good. Now you're good.
Things to say about that beautiful face. Adrian, thanks so much for everything you've done. I will personally miss you, particularly on the Complanning Committee all those years. And may I say, you're one of the best DJs I also have ever heard as well. So look forward to seeing you in that forum as well.
Yeah, ditto, Jeff. Here's Naida, ditto.
I have my ear horn on me.
So anyway, take care. Thanks so much for your help.
All right. So I think that will, oh, Commissioner Tagheev.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Perryman. I haven't served alongside you for very long, but what I have seen of you has been just hugely inspirational. And I thank you for always standing up for what you believe in and being willing to do that in my learning the else things. So thank you and all the best of luck.
Thank you. I'm on the internet, Facebook, MySpace. You can find me. Let me know.
MySpace.
All right, guys. So thank you, everybody, for the thoughtful conversation today and for engaging in the discussion. For those that provided comments, it is a difficult, it seemed to me that was a difficult item on the agenda. I was sort of glad it was the only item on the agenda so that we could have a discussion about it and provided the time and attention that it did. And so I wish everybody a good weekend and we'll see you in two weeks.
Bye-bye.